Folks, it's 7:03. We're a little late getting started. But welcome to the October 11th meeting of the Westford School Committee. And we'll start things with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in every liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with our consent agenda. The warrants were in the packet.
Yep. There was three warrants.
Yep.
So if everybody didn't see the updated agenda today, there's a third warrant listed from October 7th. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay. Any questions on that or comments? All right, all in favor? Passes 6-0. Thank you. Now is our time for public comment. I don't see anybody in the room for public comment. If you're on Zoom, you can give public comment by raising your hand. If you're on YouTube, or no, no YouTube tonight. If you aren't watching us on Westford Cat, you would need to switch over to Zoom. Our link is always on the agenda. That's our protocol for doing remote public comment. We like to hear from people whether they're here in person or at home. Okay, seeing no public comment, why don't we go ahead and have our informational updates? And we'll start with the superintendent update.
Sure. The, I was in a meeting with Desi last week about, it was a number of different things. But one of the things they were talking about, reminding us all that we are entering cold and flu season.
Right?
And so they wanted to make sure that we were communicating to all of our families the importance of really supporting and listening to our nurses. As our nurses are, you know, they, when students have fevers, it might not necessarily mean one thing or the other, but a fever does mean that they need to go home. Right? And so that was something that they were just talking about as we begin to think in terms of the changes that have gone on with COVID-19. And as we move into the fall, there's just a lot of things going around. So we recognize how difficult it can be for families when they need to come and pick their child up. But we just really need to make sure that we're supporting our nurses in the event that they need to have that discussion. And with that, some, I think some really excellent news for one of our grade one teachers at the Robinson School. Ms. Taylor Papado was published in an educational blog with Learning A to Z. She wrote an article about creating an environment that instills curiosity, right, for her students. And so she was sharing a bunch of her strategies that she shares along with her colleagues. And so it was great to see that. So I just want to congratulate her for being published. I think that's always an exciting thing. And she didn't tell us about it. Her colleagues had to tell us about it because she didn't want that sort of, she didn't want that recognition. But I just, I think it's great and it's wonderful to be able to celebrate things like that. During my visits last week, when I visited Blanchard specifically, I went through all of the world language classes. And so that in itself, I had mentioned in my October 1st update that that is exercise for my brain in a different way. You know, having to listen to the language classes as they are full immersion, going from German to Spanish to Latin to French. And I was never, I was never really good at any of them. And so it was something that then, and to be able to follow along what's going on, I just, I thought it was, it was, it's always a phenomenal thing to see in action and specifically to see our sixth and seventh graders in an immersive environment, really being able to sort of, you know, pick up these skills, I think in a very different way than I was studying languages eons ago. The interesting piece about it too, though, is that it also reminded me that this year, we have the great opportunity to have our exchange programs up and running again. So our Spanish exchange students had already come. Our German students, have the German students, they're still here?
Yeah, they're, oh, no, they're here for some time.
That's right. And the French students are about to arrive. And then our students will be going to one of the different countries in the spring. And so that's just a wonderful thing for us to remember that that didn't happen for a while now. And so to be able to have that opportunity again, I think is excellent. And another thing that I noticed back speaking to my time over at Blanchard, which I thought was great, which I really wanted to highlight, was just a reminder that things like mask breaks that we were doing so regularly, it's been great to see how the schools have continued to incorporate those breaks. Right? So while they no longer need to be mask breaks per se, they're still embedding, you know, this time into the teams for the students to get this air, which I think is, is great. Along with the shout outs to Taylor, also Magali Rodriguez Ronan let us know that our, Adam Ignano had shared with us, he's a curriculum coordinator, right, for social studies six through 12, that some of our IDM work was chosen to be an exemplar by Desi to be shared across the state, which I think was great, based on like the civics projects that they're doing in, at the academy. When they had shared that information, Desi was like, this is fantastic. We're going to use this and share this with other places. So I thought that was great. The last thing I was going to just share from the schools, Ms. Cannelli wanted me to share with everybody that they're very excited that their new gardens are, and their new garden beds are ready to watch their, she said their orchard grow. So I didn't quite know what they planted, but they are anticipating watching a wonderful harvest there. So I thought that was, that was great. And then the last thing I just wanted to let all of you know is that October, our principals don't necessarily always get a lot of praise, right? They deal with a lot of problem solving and they sometimes get, have to, have to deal with a lot of issues that will rise to their level. They don't necessarily get a lot of praise. October is the month in which we like to kind of make sure that we reach out and thank our principals. So I just let all of you know that, that if that comes across, you think of, you know, a nice word that you want to, you know, send off to one of our principals, I think they'd greatly appreciate that.
And then just the one thing I'd like to add is this Friday, we have an exciting opportunity for our full leadership team. We have Lawrence Alexander, who is a gentleman that has become, actually, his name has become very popular over the past year or so. And his focus is inclusive excellence in recruitment, hiring and retention. So his focus with us will be addressing implicit biases in the workplace, hiring and retaining candidates of color, examining job descriptions and interview questions, and even websites for implicit bias. So there might be a point in the year where we want to come and do some kind of facelifts on our current job descriptions, depending on what we learn from this session. And while he's coming once to kick it off, we know that he's going to be introducing work that will be, will be following through with throughout the year and years to come. So we're excited about that.
That's it? That's what we got?
Sorry, quick follow up. What was IDM?
Inquiry Design Model.
Oh, okay.
It's just a method of framing curriculum units in social studies.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks. School committee updates. Except for policy, because I know we'll be having plenty of that in a little bit. So.
So I have, well, one. CPAC met last week, last week? Yeah, last Thursday. First meeting of the year remotely. Hopefully in the future, we'll be able to meet in person, but was remote. Those of you who don't know, CPAC has some new leadership this year. Kate Crosby, Lisa Studer, and Jonathan Wright are heading up the organization. And this initial meeting was a chance to kind of discuss what issues CPAC wanted to tackle, where it was going, things of that nature. There was a discussion about doing the survey a little earlier. So maybe it didn't end up on, I think last year it was like our last meeting or second to last meeting. It's pretty, pretty late last year. So there was some feedback maybe about having that a little earlier. So if there were things that we were able to parse out of it, that maybe the committee could address them. There was also an extensive discussion regarding blue rooms and seclusion rooms. So I think that's probably going to be on CPAC's radar this year. So all you know, I think this is a discussion that's occurring at the state level. It's occurring nationally, things like that. But pretty extensive discussion as to that. And I think I'll keep you guys in the loop as to where that goes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate it. And send our gratitude for those who stepped up to lead CPAC this year. Other committee updates.
We hope to see everybody next Monday at Special Town Meeting.
At 7:00 PM at the Westford Academy Gymnasium. There will be a alternate, alternative seating section. If you would like some movement or group seating for families or people who like, you know, overflow room sort of, but you'll still be able to vote and participate. That's my only reminder there. Finance Subcommittee is hoping to meet next Tuesday, so that will be great. And I think I had one more. Nobody else?
What is?
Give me a second.
I was going to. Well, if you want to think, Valerie, I was actually just going to come in. I know I had been in touch with Nina and I know we've spoken about the MAS C conference. So it's happening November 2nd to, I think, the 5th or 6th. And I just wanted to see if anyone was interested about booking tickets or joining.
And based on what we see in the budget, it seems like it covers.
Covered two.
Two, right?
Yeah.
So if, I know you're interested, if people are interested, maybe we can talk, like, just talk to me afterwards and we can kind of arrange who's going to go. I don't know if we've missed the deadline for nominating a delegate.
Yeah, the delegate is, I think that was, I think that deadline passed.
Yeah, I don't remember the deadline.
I think it's sometime in October, actually, but it's probably between this meeting and the next one.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for bringing that. I was going to bring it up as well. It's on the Cape, as usual.
Very central location.
No, no, I'm not. That's not a selling part, November. I mean, that's.
Kind of random, actually. It's not very central to the overall state.
Yeah.
Tradition. A deal, a deal at the conference center.
I remembered my other thing.
Okay.
I, I think most of you know that I post on Facebook, on my school committee page, recaps after each meeting. And I have been approached by the League of Women Voters to perhaps link in their newsletters to that page, to my page for those recaps. I'm still sort of milling about how I personally feel about it, but I just wanted to raise it here so that if anybody wants to approach me and have any thoughts on it, we can try to figure out what that means as a committee. And go forward.
Well, I think that's a lovely reflection of your, of your recaps, the fact that the League of Women Voters want to link with it. So kudos to you. And I know a lot of people in town value that avenue for kind of a catch up and a check in. So, well done.
That's it?
Yep.
I was going to say something.
We'll just sit here and.
The school walkthroughs, because our first one is this week.
Yeah.
If you haven't told me which ones you want to do, do it tonight because I'm going to start filling in the schedule. And those who have told me, thank you.
Chris, on the walkthrough, I just, it dawned on me the other day, and I was wondering if we could maybe consider looking at doing, not necessarily a walkthrough, but maybe kind of looking also at more of the kind of, the, I know we're looking at each individual building, but what I thought would be really interesting was to kind of also look at some more of the programs kind of linked that there would be a conversation or a walkthrough or regarding the REACH program or specifically the, maybe with a bit more special education, academic, social, emotional learning support in mind. I don't know, it's, I'm just kind of throwing it out there that maybe it's something we might consider either adding or doing at a later point.
That's what I'm trying to think. If, I don't know how, how that fits in with the schedules and if that's something we feel like we could add to what we're doing or if we want to do, if we want to do another one.
Yeah.
I'm kind of open to either.
Yeah.
If we feel like it can be an add-on to what we're doing now or if we feel like we need more time
Yeah.
to do a dedicated, you know. And I don't know that would have to be at every school per se either too, so.
No, no. I mean, I know it's just often, I, either I'm talking with staff or family and they specifically mentioned the REACH program, which is, you know, one of our big programs. And I'm just very aware that it's not in my wheelhouse. I've never, you know, seen it. And I was thinking that probably a lot of the school committee members would be of similar. And considering it's such an important program and valued by a lot of families in our district, I think it would be nice to kind of, you know, see it a bit more at play rather than in theory.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
One of the things to consider as we, as we look at that and figure out the opportunity for that is the, the size of the group that you're traveling with. And so that, I don't think the groups that you're going to have working with the curriculum coordinators would be appropriate to be necessarily all visiting a REACH classroom at the same time.
Yep.
So I think we need to, we need to think about that.
So we'll put it on as something we want to figure out in the coming months.
We can, we can look at, and I'll look at the schedule again and look and see it might be, it might be possible on those days for like a little, like, like a little, little rotation and divide. You know what I mean?
Okay.
Or it might be better to just say, let's just schedule different days.
Yeah. No, absolutely. Yeah. That would make sense.
Okay. Thank you for thinking of that. That's great. We'll do it. Anything else before we move on? Okay, student update. Magna.
Okay, so we have a lot of general stuff going on, not too many like specific updates. But, you know, sports are underway. Tomorrow we have our freshman elections, so that's going to really get things kicked off and started. And also that would mean that because the Student Advisory Council is going to meet on Friday, hopefully with the new elected freshmen, we might have a new rep that's coming from the Student Advisory Council next meeting. So that is a little exciting.
Additional rep?
Yes. And yes.
He'll still be.
Yes, an additional rep. I did not phrase that right. And we have a lot of general, of like events for the students during October month that are really exciting, that sort of up school spirit. And we have like Spirit Week, Spirit Rally. We're doing the trunk retreat, which I mentioned last time, which is October 28th, if anyone from the town is watching. And then as Dr. Chu said, we have, the German students have arrived. So it's a lot happening at our school right now. And yeah, that's like, that's it. There's not too much going. There's a lot going on, but nothing too specific. But it's a good, it's a good energy at school right now.
What's it like with the foreign exchange students? I'm just curious how, like, is it weird the first day? Do people?
Honestly, I mean, I saw a video on Instagram of like all the students meeting their German exchange students, and it felt like they all were like best friends in that video. So it was really sweet. But I mean, I think they're just getting acclimated very well. Like, I saw my friends in the hallway today and they were with the German students. And they took a picture with me because I guess they thought my shoes were really funny. So they called it Jesus sandals. They called my Birkenstocks Jesus sandals. So they took a picture with me in the middle of the hallway today. But yeah, I think, I think, I think, you know, they are getting acclimated very well. Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
It is fascinating that the German students were excited about your German sandals.
Yeah, that's true.
No, that's true. That's true. I didn't think about that.
What you learn on a cultural exchange.
I know.
Excited to see it probably.
Yeah.
Birkenstocks.
Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is our District Master Plan Feasibility Study update. And we're going to have Jeff Goodwin, Director of Facilities, join us on Zoom. Hopefully.
Yeah, he's on.
He's on, thank you.
All right. There he is. Hi, Jeff.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Can you hear me?
Yep, can you hear us? Okay?
Excellent. All right. Thank you for having me. I'm sorry I can't join you live in person tonight. I'm home with a sick kid. So just to bring you all up to speed on our feasibility study, we, over the past week, our evaluation team individually evaluated four participants who submitted qualification packages. We met last Tuesday and identified a finalist that we felt like rose above the three other architectural firms. And upon interviewing that firm on Friday, we are excited to bring to you tonight the recommendation that we can begin negotiating or working towards a contract with SMMA Architecture for the feasibility study.
Great, thank you. And I think we have their, do we have their?
We do.
Yeah, we have their packet that they submitted in our meeting packet, so folks can take a look at that. I don't know if you had any comments.
Is everybody aware that you and Valerie were, I'm not sure if everybody knew?
Oh, that's true, because we did the advertisement. So Valerie and I did sit in on those discussions and reviewed the packets of the four firms that submitted qualification packets.
Little light homework.
Yeah.
As you can see, yes, we did, we mentioned during the meeting that they were about 30 pages and then.
They were not. They were not.
Some of them were not 30 pages.
They were thorough.
They were very thorough.
As, as they needed to be.
But to, to, I think, I think Jeff might have just said this. I know he said that, you know, SMMA, we, there was a consensus of the group of us that SMMA was, was the top choice. It, I think it would be good for all of you to know that we had all individually done a, created a rubric, or we didn't create the rubrics, we'd filled out the rubrics, and we had all individually ranked SMMA as the top one before we even got into discussion about it too. So it wasn't even that we were in disagreement and then agreed. We had all actually thought that SMMA met the qualifications and exceeded them in some cases over the other, other groups.
And they were, and their interview was very impressive too.
We, yeah, we talked with a big chunk of their team. They brought a number of their members to a Zoom meeting, which was very helpful.
And their documentation along with the interview, they so clearly conveyed that the learners are at the center of their work. It's not just about numbers of enrollment and square footage in a facility. They were talking about everything that we're doing from UDL to SEL, DEI, joy of learning. And it's everything that we've embraced over the past several years and focused on more heavily over the past two as a district.
And that came through in the discussion too, too, that they, they have a specialized skill set around constructing educational facilities and so.
Full disclosure, I did work with this company in a previous district. And so in, in having the conversation, I was able to just share with the committee afterwards that it was the same work that we, that I witnessed before. And it wasn't necessarily a list of buzzwords. It's genuine. Like, it's, it's really the way in which they conduct their focus groups and the things that they're concerned about and the way in which they, they approach the projects, which I think is good.
Sean, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm going to change it though, because I think you got it.
Okay.
Nice.
Okay, so now that there's a decision that it's SMMA, what now?
So we still have to actually enter into a contract with them, right? So, and then they hit the ground running. So they, in their, in their packet, if you saw that they, they have a very specific timeline as to when things, they'd be able to meet all of those things. And they explained to us that that was a realistic timeline for them. And so they would go through that process and be delivering us a, a draft report in March and then a final report in May. And so when you, when you look at the different things that they outline in their, in their packet, the, I think the things that we just need to talk with them about are they, they do need to actually see the data that we are sharing, like the, the facilities drawings that we already have, our enrollment data. We'll have to share that with them and then they'll be able to respond to that once they actually see it better to say, okay, well now this is what our recommendation would be. But they're ready to, really, once we, once we're able to, you know, reach, reach the, sign an agreement, they're ready to hit the ground running and start going to schools. They'd be walking through all of the buildings. They'd be looking at everything from a facilities angle, plus they'd be starting different focus groups. I think both through surveys, through actual meetings, visiting schools and talking with teachers, talking with students, talking with families. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
In addition to what you've outlined with facilities and focus groups, would, would they also be looking at transportation?
It was one of our questions.
Yeah, we, yeah, we asked that. And the sense is that, yes, they, they can factor that in. I don't know to what fidelity they're going to model. I don't think they're going to be modeling bus routes, but they will look at where our students are located. They will look at where, you know, our buildings are located and help us come up with a configuration that makes sense, you know, and sort of maximizes or minimizes long transportation routes. I assume could be part of that. And they've done that before.
Yeah, two of the things that they mentioned when we were talking with them specifically was one, when we asked the question about transportation, they, they quickly started talking about, well, depends on your grade level configurations that you decide to go with. So, and depending on what the start times you're looking at and whether you'd want to readjust your start times. And then they talked about all of the data that exists that our Citizen Action Group had looked at, but they're well versed in all of that. And the reality of, you know, now that that's been a couple of years old, being able to now look and see what has the start time impact had on other districts as well too. So they were well versed at that. And the other thing that they talked about, which I thought was a great thing for us to have on our radar, specifically now that we have full, full day tuition free, full day K, was that their, their educational leader specifically was talking about the idea that universal pre-K is, that conversation, he is already aware that that conversation is in the State House and it's in, you know, process. We don't know what it's going to look like. He's like, but you want to look at your facilities and have that in mind in the event that you then find someday that you have to provide that. And so I think that fore, that forethought and the way in which they just talked about different programming and the way that they're interested in understanding our current programming is, is great.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
I mean, they checked all the boxes. They even mentioned like sort of looking at our, what outdoor spaces we have within, with like kind of a COVID lens and.
Sainability aspect of things, talking about, you know, what, what, and so it's all different options and different things. And that, and this again, the, the idea of this master plan is to create a long range capital needs and, and options for us to consider.
And, and sorry to jump on that, but the, what really hit home too in the interview to me was that that document won't just be like this stale snapshot in time. They really want this to become something that you can kind of, oh, we executed on this, so now we're going to use that data to do why, right? Like to make it kind of a living document that helps us make decisions years down the road instead of just like this one snapshot in time, great, now it's out of date.
Changed and it's.
Right.
It's kind of like a roadmap.
Right.
For, we're amazing.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds, it was really exciting to go through, even, even start with all the sort of qualification packages and see, like, start to the wheels turning of like what might be possible and stuff. Pretty exciting.
Jeff, anything to add?
No, I think Dr. Chu summed it up nicely. I think tonight we were just hoping for a recommendation from the committee to give us the approval to pursue the next step in the process. And that's to continue to work towards a contract with SMMA.
Great. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Motion to authorize the superintendent to. Motion to authorize the superintendent to contract with SMMA to develop the master plan.
Second.
Gloria with the second, any last questions or comments before we call for the vote? Okay, all in favor? Excellent, six zero.
All right.
Off and running.
Okay, thank you.
Exciting.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you to that committee for putting that together so quick. I mean, that was, right, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Impressive.
With a lot of homework by the side.
Yes. And a good rubric too, that helped us sort of like know what to look for.
And Jackie Studi.
Yeah.
Yeah. Studly, thank you, I'm like, that's not it, it's Studly. I, I missed a, missed a consonant. So Jackie, Jeff, Dr. Cleary, myself, and Chris and Valerie were on the committee, and so we appreciate all their work and organization.
And Jeff really, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but Jeff really went above what was required for this type of process, right? Like, you don't have to sort of do that rubric that we did individually and everything, so it's sort of really crossed all the twos and stuff.
Because of the funding, because it was below $300,000, it's, it's $250,000 that he, he went through the process that we would need to go through if it was more, and so thought that it was a really important exercise for us to do so that there, it was just fully transparent, and so he did do an excellent job with it, but thank you, that is true. He did go above and beyond what was necessary.
All right.
Exciting.
Next agenda item is our October first enrollment update.
So our number, our bottom line number is the same as it was a month ago. We have 4,716 students enrolled in the district. There, there were some internal, just a few internal changes, but the bottom line stayed the same. So the, the numbers did change just a little bit in some of our grade areas with some students leaving and some students coming in, but it stayed, it stayed the same. I didn't know if anybody has any questions about it or not, but... All right, that was October.
Straightforward.
And this is our, this will be our official, October one is just a reminder for everybody, this is our official number that we report to the state, right? So that therefore we have that, that information.
All right. Next up superintendent goals.
So we met, well, last week, because today's the first day of the week. So Catherine and Chris and I met and talked about the goals that I had presented previously on the, on the 28th, and they had some suggestions, we talked about it. So if you look at what was posted this evening, there are, the highlighted areas are the adjustments that we made. So under the, the sense of belonging, under the second benchmark, we just clarified that. The original sentence was that the principals would identify strategies and target areas to strengthen the sense of belonging within their school. And what, what we had talked about was they were knowing that the next benchmark, which is a successful evaluation feedback of principal goals, that's part, that's a, that's part of the evaluation process, and it's personnel, therefore their evaluations are not, are not public. So it was a question like, well, what, how, what might we see? And so we said, well, having them actually reflect those strategies in their school improvement plans is a public document, so that makes a lot of sense. So, so we just kind of adjusted that statement so that then people would know, oh, okay, that's something that I would be expected to see there. And talking about, we also added the, just using, utilizing available data, because I talk about the panorama data specifically, but we know that our principals are actually looking at all sorts of data, whether it's, whether it's demographic data, whether it's data based on discipline reports, whether it's data based on student growth, whether it's data based, a whole bunch of different aspects of things. So we just said that it could be, it could be, it could be a wide variety of sources of, of data there. So that was that explanation there. Then the other change was when we were talking about the district improvement goal, I mean, so, number four, which is the, the, it is a district improvement goal, but it's the strategic district improvement plan. I added conducting a virtual public webinar to share priority areas with families and community stakeholders to gather additional feedback. So we had talked about the idea that in the months of October and November, the principals are gonna be meeting with their school advisory councils, and they're gonna be talking about the, the priority areas. And so some of the feedback was that not everybody can attend, even though those are open meetings, not everybody necessarily could attend that, so the idea of having an alternative event potentially in the evening at some point where people could participate in a webinar and ask questions and/or provide feedback that Chris also helped, volunteered to help with, so that it was not just me trying to, you know, talk and, and monitor questions and things like that. And Catherine might have actually volunteered a little bit to help too.
She did.
I don't remember.
To be fair, as you mentioned, you're just paying it forward, because Dr. Chu reminded of, reminded us of some of those COVID, like that 2020, 2021 year when we did a bunch of webinars, and he was the Q and A master in those, and did a really nice job, so it's only fair that you don't have to worry about that.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then the other changes actually were all about the indicators. So I had listed specific indicators that I was thinking, and when Chris and Catherine looked at the rubric, they thought, hey, maybe some of these others tied in closer to it, and I agreed. So, so we just changed the three different indicators. Again, they're within the standard, but it's just a slightly different indicator that, that matches maybe the work that we're talking about doing a little bit better. But so that's the, those are the only changes from what was originally presented to you on the 28th.
And we appreciate you listening and incorporating some of that feedback. It was based on the conversation we had the last meeting, we tried to get a sense of, you know, where the committee was at, and, and thought the goals were great, and, and, you know, appreciate, again, the consideration on those things. Any thoughts or questions on the superintendent goals now that we've had a couple of meetings to look at them?
I'll just say thank you to the, you know, the two of you for providing that feedback and taking the time to do that. Thank you for being responsive to the feedback. I mean, I, I think having these conversations along the way is, is great, and something we should, you know, make sure we incorporate into our practice.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that, that it felt really constructive to be able to talk about them like that.
Absolutely.
Was that a motion?
Motion to approve superintendent, oh, sorry, yeah, superintendent's 2022, 2023 goals.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Six oh. There we go, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item on our agenda is the policy that we brought last time to the committee, in the policy subcommittee, and there have been, been flurry of activity and new developments, and so I'll hand it over to Gloria and Catherine to let us know where we're at with that.
Awesome, so, yes, last meeting, we, we introduced P 6205. Again, to remind people that this was a policy, a new policy that we were looking at creating based on, a, a family had brought to our attention in the district an issue regarding online virtual public schools, and they're getting involved in extracurricular activities in the district. We, at the same time, had also been given, Somerville have a policy, a similar policy that looks at homeschooling and the public online schooling and how they were doing it. So we had taken that as kind of a roadmap, or guidance on creating this, this policy. And if you remember at the last meeting, just as we were about to sit down, Chris Chu decided to put the first wrinkle in the policy, which was the MIAA that I think Jeff Bunyan had maybe kind of shown you.
It wasn't like a choice, really.
No.
Just this is the information we had.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Right, it was in direct.
Well, this is how, this is the process in work, that we put it up there, and we have the conversation, and we figure it out. So I think this is all good and positive. And then we also had received public comment, both via airtable, and then a homeschooling parent came to policy meeting on Friday, which was lovely. And we were really able to kind of drill down into the policy a bit more and the concerns and queries over the whole thing. So I think the first thing to, to kind of, to come to is myself and Gloria spoke a lot on Friday, another long policy meeting, trying to figure out what the next steps were, and we were kind of coming to the table tonight with the suggestion that we would probably pause and pull this policy as is for now while we scope out our other options. So the first thought was with the MIAA wrinkle. To, to give some background, the MIAA is the governing body for the interscholastic sports within Massachusetts schools. And they, up until May or June of this year, had a waiver program in place for students who are homeschooled or who are on public online schools, where they could get a waiver to, if the principal of the home district agreed, they could play on that home district team, even if they were either homeschooled or on a virtual public school. And this information was also on the DESI website. However, as of July 1st, MIAA were now saying that the waiver process would not be available to online public students. Factor that in, we then discovered after that there is a lawsuit currently happening. There is two, currently two now students in two districts in the state now taking MIAA to court to figure out how they can solve this issue. The, they did have a hearing in the, on the 13th of September, which the judge ruled at the time that because the court, the, the case has to be heard and seen through, she was not willing to kind of make any rulings on that day, but did ask that the lawyers involved from both sides would maybe come together, figure out a deal that would keep them going for the time being while they figure the bigger picture out. And I do have an update to say that there has no, no deal has been reached regarding that right now. So at the moment, there's no movement, and they're waiting for the case to play out in the courts. So that kind of is the MIAA kind of side of things, which kind of does come into play in, in the nature of this. And I suppose to say, the extracurricular activities isn't just the, the football team or the lacrosse team. It's, you know, if there's a chess club, if there's the theater show, so it's, it's all these kind of after-school activities that are not connected to the curriculum that we're, we're talking about here. But the MIAA definitely did kind of give us some thought to figure out. I did speak to DESI as well, actually, regarding as well their thoughts on it, and they said, at this moment in time, MIAA side, there is nothing prohibiting us from allowing any student to take part in any extracurricular activities in our district. It is completely up to the school committee and the district's decision for people to take part. The homeschooling parent then, who brought her some really fascinating knowledge to us on Friday and through her airtable, kind of said, well, we currently do have a homeschooling policy that really works well for us. She said it's very comprehensive, it gives a lot of kind of designation to the superintendent to work with and figure it out. And what was really lovely to hear through it all was that Westford actually has a really good reputation within homeschooling communities, and especially military fam, military families who also homeschool a lot, and obviously move a lot, so that, it was really nice to hear. And so she felt that having the homeschooling policies involved with the online public schools kind of muddied the waters a bit and potentially caused more restrictions for our homeschooling students because of some of the language and stuff we were using. So the question is now, where do we go from here, after all of that fact finding? We, as myself and Gloria said, we kind of felt that having, you know, separating the homeschooling from the online public schooling, which is clearly an issue and is going to crop up more and more post-COVID world, look, need to have a policy for some sort of guidance on extracurricular. And so I think it's just throwing the floor open to discussion tonight on what you think that policy might look like, what you might like to see in it, coming from a place of inclusion and equity and social, emotional learning. You know, I, I think that's really at the heart of this type of policy, so.
Thanks Catherine. Gloria, anything to add?
You know, Catherine gave a fantastic summary, I mean, the only thing I, I think I'd add is, obviously, you know, thank you to all the information we received. It, it is a thornier process than I think we, we had initially hoped, but it's better to, I think, take the slower road and, and reach the right result. Very much, you know, for any, for this parent who commented, or for any homeschool parents and families, are intended absolutely to expand access and was not in any way to limit the access of, of our homeschool students to extracurricular activities in the district. So I think it does make sense to separate them out and deal with potential expansion to virtual students separately. They are in a slightly different situation. Our homeschoolers already have a relationship with the district, they file homeschooling plans with the district, so they, they are in some sense already under our auspices. Our virtual students who may be residents in Westford and attending an online public virtual high school have a relationship with DESI, but not necessarily directly with the district. So they're in a slightly different situation, in a different category. So it may make sense to have a, a different policy that exclusively addresses them. That's a substantial enough change to what we were already, had proposed, that we really do need to just go back to the drawing board. And we'd be pausing this for now, but still pursuing it, and we'd, at a future date, bring you back a new po, a new policy for a new first read, and then we would go through the public comment process again. So, a bit of a, a bit of a balk and a restart.
And just to be clear, pausing it here, but not at policy?
Sure, absolutely.
I have a question, that do we have, currently have a policy regarding homeschool attending extracurricular?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so like, so basically that, that, we should just leave that policy alone? Yeah. Okay, don't touch that one? Yeah.
Nope, I'm not, not messing with that.
Yeah.
What Somerville had done was, they had included homeschooling and online public school and kind of had gotten more detailed on it, and had maybe given more clarification. And I think, you know, considering, that's one of the reasons why we initially felt, oh, this maybe helped homeschooling families to get a bit more detail, but actually, from the feedback we got, is that our homeschooling policy works really well as is, and that it makes sense to kind of keep it all contained, because it's one policy. That policy doesn't just talk about extracurriculars, it outlines the process for which a family have to, you know, kind of get, sign off for their studies for the year and, and all of that. So it's kind of more of that policy all in a nutshell, which is quite nice and tidy.
Yeah, so, so just leave that alone, it's not broken, don't fix it.
Yeah. So the question is really, for our online public students, seeing them engage in extracurricular activities in Westford as a district, and creating a policy that is very inclusive and maybe supports our students who are at home. There's a variety of reasons that these students end up at home working through the online public school system, and, and some of them are involved in sports, and some of them are for educational reasons, and some of them are for social, emotional reasons. And so I think this is actually a very important policy that we can create to really be the inclusive district that we want to be in, in supporting our students and our, our families. They are taxpayers, they do contribute to our, our budget, even if they are at home.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just like, for example, using like an extreme example, for example, if another COVID hit, right? And then kids, and they are actually attending... And then kids and they are actually attending schools virtually at home while in, in a different school or different district or for whatever reason, like hopefully whatever policy would come up should address that situation as well, not just online public school, just like, how, how do we deal with, for example, the case cannot actually attend some activity in another place, but they want to actually keep connected.
Oh, if they're in a private school.
Yeah.
Is it?
Or online or whatever.
Yeah. That has been a big part of our discussion as well. The thought on that is if you choose to go to a private school or through school choice, go to another district, you are going to a physical building that typically runs, um, like a school and would have options for extracurricular activities.
But it could be an online school because nowadays narrow online schools.
Which?
Narrow online, even for private school, narrow online private schools.
So the private online school actually comes more, could potentially become more under, possibly, and Carrie, you might know more about this. We've had so many options. We've been down the rabbit hole on this. And my understanding is that, you know, some homeschooling families do use private virtual, um, programs and curriculums. So actually a lot of the private virtual seems to come under the homeschooling umbrella. So this is very specifically talking about the online public school. So there's two in, in Massachusetts. You have Teca and you have the Commonwealth.
Or Commonwealth.
It used to be Greenfield. And then some districts within Massachusetts offer their own district virtual school, but we don't.
Right.
So that's where we're really talking about. And I mean that, you know, the, the, these public schools, the online ones, they have the same criteria to follow as we do. They have MCAS. So they, they follow the expectations for them academically is the same for us.
The history of how, how the, the conversations in different towns and definitely with the MIAA came about, I think it's because everything changed so quickly, right? So if you think about it, there, just a few years ago, there, I mean, and we still have some of these expectations as well too, that if you're not in school, you can't participate in the activity, right? For, for the students who are enrolled in the school for, for whatever reason. And then all of a sudden, because part of Somerville's, um, policy, actually, I, I think it just talked about virtual learning, like more so than even online public schools. Like it really talked about virtual learning, which made me think, did they start that because of their own students who might be, who might be connecting virtually and wanted to make sure that they would still have access to things as well too? And then I, I think the MIAA starts looking at, okay, now that, now that there has been this, this growth in students participating in online schools, how has that impacted interscholastic sports? And so did they create some of these regulations in order to, to kind of, you know, streamline where people are choosing to go? I don't know. It's interesting because it's, everything has changed so quickly that I think for us to say, okay, let's come up with something that is, that makes sense, that is supportive and is, that can be universal is, is the better road.
So it, it strikes me where we are right now, right? That it's probably going to at least be a few weeks because a lot more has to happen for a new draft policy to come back. You know, you guys have to do more of an investigation, more wordsmithing. There's this MIAA stuff that's going on and, you know, I suppose if we waited for guidance from them, from a court, you know, you're looking at quite some time, right? So if hypothetically speaking, if there was a family who fell under these set of facts right now, what would the district's position be? Would it just be like a per case basis or something? Because obviously like, we're not going to be passing a policy tonight. So what, if that did come to, you know, the central offices, uh, purview, what, would it just be done on a per case basis or?
Well, I think that's a good question because I think the reason why we're having this conversation is because the policy didn't support it.
Right.
Right? And so that's, that was our, that was the, the legal guidance that we were given was that our policies don't support it.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's more, we had no policy.
Right.
So we, that, it was the lack of policy.
Right.
Yeah.
And so.
Not that we were excluding.
Not that we were excluding.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And so I think that, that would be, that would take more investigation. Because then we knew that, like, that almost immediately we started looking at the policy.
Right. Right.
So then that was kind of like, I think we were, we were trying to do the right thing and, and look at that. So I feel like that is a, a question that still needs to be answered.
Okay.
My understanding is there's no law prohibiting.
Correct.
This at all in any way.
Right.
And DESI today in the conversation I had with them were saying, we've had this conversation before. It's definitely cropped up a number of times, especially recently. And that they are saying that there is nothing prohibiting us. It's completely up to us as a committee and as a district, um, how we want to create our guidelines or policy around it.
I think, and I, and I would, I would agree with that. I, I do believe that our lawyers are looking at it from a liability standpoint and not from a, and DESI would not be. DESI's looking at it as you can do whatever you want, which is nice and that's great. And that's good that that supports that. But I think the concern is the liability aspect of it, which is why the policy is important.
Okay. So what I would say is if our policy committee needs more time, right? Which clearly they do. And, you know, when's our next meeting? Two weeks from now? And what, two weeks after that would be the first time that we would be able to actually pass it, right? So we're looking at at least a month, potentially longer. At, at least, and this is my own opinion, which is that I would hope the district would take the more inclusive view of this. Something that tries to include more students, right? Recognizing that our at-home student population, you know, they're taxpaying residents and so on. And, and it, it's consistent with our values, right? Social emotional wellbeing, things like that. Because that's what we're talking about. These are extracurricular activities, right? The, I, I under, every time, if you ask a lawyer to do anything, they're going to say, err on the side of don't doing it, right? Because I, I mean, that's just what lawyers do, right? Like we're going to.
Coming from a lawyer, that's important for people that are not yet.
We're going to, we're going to give you the more conservative route, right? And, and I get it. And there's probably some absurd set of facts where the district could have a very, very slight chance at, you know, being hooked liability wise on it. But the reality of it is, is that we're maintaining public property here and we have thousands of people coming and going from our buildings at any given time and we owe them all a duty of care irrespective of whether they're students or not, if they're visitors, things like that. I say this as a premises liability attorney. Like it doesn't, just because they have the student name on them, doesn't mean that, you know, they're the only ones that we have to care for. So, um, I, I, again, I would err on the side of if it's going to take us a month to do this and if there's hypothetically a family in waiting, I, I would suggest that the district takes the more inclusive position and, and include this family in whatever activity it is. But of course, that's a day-to-day decision. So I'm going to, you know, defer to the superintendent's office to, you know, make a decision that's best for the district. But that's my opinion.
Thank you. Oh, I was just going to say, I feel like though the MIAA thing is still, we, we're err on the side of inclusivity, but would you say, but not running afoul of the current MIAA rule, which says this would be a no-go for virtual, for a virtual student? That's where I draw the line is like.
It kind of goes back to what we were talking about before, which is we can control what we can control.
Right.
Right? Which is the idea of the MIAA piece is that we don't have, they, they decide who can participate in interscholastic sports. And so at that point, to your point, is that for us to be able to make decisions?
I don't think we get to say that they can't.
No.
Right.
Until that, unless that changes.
But we can find language that essentially allows for, um, inclusion in district extracurricular activities and.
Sure.
The opportunity to participate in interscholastic based on, because I know it's not just MIAA. I know sometimes the theater groups do competition.
We had talked about before, like there might be other governing, governing bodies of, of, for, that include competitions that would have very specific guidelines that we would be expected to follow.
Yeah. And so that's just adding a simple line that says, you know, adhering to whatever governing bodies guidelines on that.
Policy-wise, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, but then there's still that interim period where we don't have a policy that it really, you know, I would, I would, I would agree, you know, like I would err on the side of inclusivity, but also you have to, you know, you have to look at the, the liability and weigh that, weigh that. And, you know, I think.
It's interesting to get Sean's insight on that.
Yeah.
I know.
Like, um, is it possible to work with the lawyer to actually to have a release of liability, ask the family to sign? So at least we have a piece of written paper if, if, if the superintendent decides, hey, if they want, really want to participate and if there is any way to release the district from any liability.
You need to sign those at, at the trampoline.
They don't always hold up, but.
I wanted you to say that, not.
But as someone who is not counsel for the district, I would suggest the superintendent have, if, if there is hypothetically a family who's in waiting on this, I'm sure the superintendent will do due diligence, speak to the family and speak to counsel and make an educated decision. My, my opinion is, is just err on the side of one that's more inclusive as to, as opposed to if it's, you know, there's a very slight chance that something could run afoul, you know? But that's just me.
So that's, I mean, that, that's sort of the division of responsibility. I think that makes sense that the policy committee is going to keep looking at the policy that will be in effect at some date in the very near future.
ASAP.
ASAP. And in the meantime, just as it should be, the administration will deal with any, you know, actual instances and families that are looking for that sort of accommodation right now. Does that make sense?
Yeah. It does.
Okay.
So we are, just to clarify, we're not going to vote on this policy, obviously, tonight. I don't think it was set, yes.
Scheduled to anyway.
It was actually, oh, yes.
It was our second meeting.
It was the second discussion.
Right.
But we will be taking down the policy for public discussion to, after the meeting tonight, um, and until we can come back with a new and improved policy.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
Logistics, you don't need to vote on that.
Right.
Stay tuned.
Thank you. Good discussion. Thanks, guys.
Yeah. We all had a, a version of homework apparently.
That's true.
Just going to say that.
Ours had, ours had pretty pictures in it though.
I'm just going to say, I don't miss policy.
Okay. Next on the agenda is personnel update.
And we're going to share that on September 25th, two weeks from today. We have several.
October.
We have two, several pending that we want a more complete picture when we share. So we'll have that then.
Great. That's all I've got on the agenda.
And we're 30 minutes early. Motion to adjourn. Seconds.
All in favor?
We spend no time with that.
No.